This time I'll call the December 6, 2018 meeting to order for Dixon County Commission. Would you please stand and join in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As far as roll call, all three commissioners are present at this. Craig Chamberlain is joining us by phone, so he's able to hear what our discussion is and agenda items, but also he's able to participate in any comments that he would want to do. At this time, on the agenda, we have two additions. One has to do with 2330 Moon Road. It's a KDOT project for a total bridge replacement and an engineering fee. And so I would add that to the agenda. And also Dixon County will be dispersing some funds to some of the museums throughout our county, which is Harrington, Hope, Towneage, and Chapman. And so we'll add that to the agenda. And other than that, with those two additions, I would move that we approve the amended agenda.
I'll second it.
We have the motion, the second. Any further discussion or question? Otherwise, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. The consent agenda includes the minutes of November 28 meeting, fund expenditures of $372,887.71, wire payments, utilities $10,781.86, abatements $1,708.4, KDHE wire payment[142.13][142.13]$155,137.55.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
I'll second that. Any other questions or comment?
Brad, I noticed we had a payment on the Union Road Bridge. Is that our last payment on that?
That's our final payment, yes.
That's the final payment for that bridge?
Yes, sir. Yep, that should close out, like $170,000 or something like that.
Yeah, above $150,000. So that made our fund expenditures look a little high, but it was for that final payment.
Okay. So we have the motion, the second. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we'll go to commission comment and reports. Laburn, we'll go ahead and start with you.
Okay, last Thursday evening, I attended the research, the extension, research and extension had their annual, well, I guess you'd call it their reorganization meeting, where they elected their officers and anyway, it's always enjoyable to go to that meeting because Jill and Renee always put together a bingo contest, which makes us think a little bit about all the different things that they do in research and extension. And anyway, I might have mentioned one of them, since we've turned over the Part D consulting that Renee does down there, that they had 106 people this year that they've done that for, and with the savings of $118,000 for the people. And so it does pay to look at those programs and get signed up for the right program to help you with your drug costs. And they actually, the oldest person that they had signed up was a 101-year-old man. So it doesn't matter how old you are, you can still, and like I say, there is a lot of other things that, like I say, that the amount of kids that win awards and the, there were hours that the kids have spent at the radio station and, like I say, just numerous things that they were involved in. And also yesterday, the Food Pantry had their monthly order come in from the Wichita Food Bank, and just want to thank all the volunteers that come in yesterday and helped, I love that, that Food for the Food Pantry. That's all I got.
Okay, thank you. Craig, would you have any comments?
I can't be there today with my broken leg. I'll probably miss the next meeting, and hopefully the meeting after that, I'll be able to get somebody to take me, or maybe I'll be able to drive by then. But, no, I appreciate you guys sharing load for me. Thank you.
Yeah, we're hoping for a speedy recovery and good to have you here participating by phone. Okay, I'll just kind of briefly, just have a couple of things. We're, the county is a member of the Abilene Area Chamber as well as the Harrington Chamber. I'm going to attend, they're having a business after hours this evening, and I'll probably be in attendance to that. Next home is having that, Becky Schwab. Earlier in the week, just had a lunch meeting with the mayor of Abilene, Tim Schaefer, and also Brad was in attendance, and Austin Gilly. And, you know, we're just looking for ways that all of us can work together. We have some, you know, certainly common threads. One of the things, too, that kind of has come out of the discussion, and we had this in our work-study session, is probably after the first year, the county, as far as the commission, we want to reach out to some of the other municipalities, and whether it's going over to Solomon, or Chapman, Harrington, and Woodbine, I mean, Hope, all of them. But we're going to kind of try to have some meetings and meet with some of those folks. And even though we identified the cities maybe as a meeting place, I mean, you know, typically there'll be people that live closer to that area, in the rural area, that it's more of a convenient opportunity. So we're going to try to schedule some things after the first of the year. And Brad had even, had mentioned, too, that perhaps we could even have something where we would go to some of the schools, either for a meeting, an official meeting to have there, or at least to touch base with them. And I think there's opportunity there. Next week, this is on another item, December 13, John Barker will be here to visit with us during the work-study session. And as probably you've seen in the newspapers and so on, they're to the place where they're having their leadership decided upon at the Kansas Legislature. And so I'm sure with that, too, the committee appointments and things will be firmed up. So I think we'll, it should be a good visit and an opportunity for us to discuss county issues with the legislature. Okay, that's all I would have, then. Is there anyone in the audience, there is public comment, if anyone has anything they'd want to comment on that is not on the agenda? Having no comments, we'll go ahead and move to reports from the county officers. And so Brad, we have you up first.
Okay, in your package, you've got your, your today staffing reports. And as we, I guess we talked a little bit when Bruce was in, he has just hired a replacement for one of his vacancies, just yesterday or today. You can see, we had three vacancies, one in the road and bridge, one in the appraiser's office, and one in the jail. And so we did also hire a new person named Martin Crute to fill his vacancy he had, so we're fortunate to get somebody there. So the jail, I'm not sure about, that's, as you're well aware, is an ongoing challenge, so. But at any rate, we're fairly well full staffed everywhere else, I think, knock on wood. So at the risk of jinxing it, I won't say anymore about that, so. You also have your budget reports, and if you look at those, the good thing is that in the right column, under ending balances, they're all positive. There's no negative balances there, so that's a good thing. We're getting down to the end of the race here with the year on the budget, and everybody's done an exceptionally good job monitoring your budgets here this year. I commend all the department heads and elected officials, they've done a very good job. So we're going to leave the 2018 with the rollover, as I think Janelle had projected and hoped, so we haven't had any surprises, we haven't had any state or federal disasters hit us that cost us, so hopefully '19 will be as good. We also have the sales tax report for the month, and the, as you see, the end of November, the September sales tax report again, a little bit lower than the August sales tax was, but it was still at 100, almost $111,000 for our sales tax, our county's 1%. And then the special sales tax forces at 107, so. Yeah, just like it from the previous month, but up from a number of the other months, it's staying consistent. I think if I remember right, we project about $1 million for sales tax on the special sales tax, and at this point, we're at 1.139. We still have the last month coming in here for the end of December, so it's done very well. Yesterday, I talked to John Barker just briefly to confirm next week's meeting with him, and reiterated that we still want him to introduce the option of extending that sales tax next year for 10 years rather than five. And so that would be something that he'll bring up next week or this year, I'm sure, so. I spoke to you briefly in the work session, but we met, I met earlier with the City of Enterprise and the Detroit Board, Sewer Board, Monday night, no, Tuesday night, I'm sorry, Tuesday night, I think, I don't know, it's been a long week. Anyhow, we met in that, one of those evenings, and we've put together an agreement between the two entities, and further on some of the sewer project that they're working on. It was something that reflects the desires of both entities, and I think that it'll work out very well for them. I provided you a copy of that, so you can review it this week if you see anything that you have questions about, and then we'll hopefully have that approved next week by both of those boards, and that way you can sign it, we'll get it to City of Enterprise and then to the Sewer Board as well, so everyone can sign it. We've put in writing to paper and for the future generations to know how that was decided and why they're paying what they are. Essentially, that is the agreement that dictates how Enterprise will pay Detroit and who will pay what expenses to share the Detroit sewer agreements with Enterprise, so. I also had been working with Flora Township and Ottawa County on another memorandum of understanding. I think, had I briefed you before on that issue up on Thursday?
You had.
A little bit. Yeah. It actually worked out pretty well, I think. We haven't got the paperwork signed yet, but I've talked to all the parties. And Shannon Luthi, who was Matt Martin's counterpart in Ottawa County, I had talked to their commissioners, and they were in agreement that if, essentially if Flora Township, well, let me back up for the sake of everybody here. We have a resident that lives in the first mile of 3200 Avenue in our county. And the road, that road from his house east is dirt, from there west is gravel, and then he has to go another mile of gravel road into Ottawa County in south to get over to K-18. Years ago, there was, I'm told there was a gentleman's agreement that probably happened in the back of a pickup next to the tailgate, that said, you know, if Flora Township, Dickinson County's Flora Township, would put gravel on that first mile of road in Ottawa County, they would maintain it. Over the years, township board members have changed, Ottawa County's personnel changed, people have moved, passed on, evaporated, whatever the case was. But that agreement wasn't being honored, and the resident that lives in our county needed to have access. And so we got both parties, and at the, when the dust cleared, Flora Township has agreed to put gravel on that first mile occasionally, and Ottawa County has agreed that when they put the gravel on, they will, if they'll do that, they'll maintain it as they do any of their other gravel roads. So everybody's happy. It's much cheaper than Flora Township looking at graveling to the east, that would be cost prohibitive, and trying to get a base on a road that doesn't have gravel now, so. And it solves a problem for the property owner, that he'll now have access to get to it from his property. So we put that in writing, I have sent that up to Shannon to provide to the Ottawa County commissioners for a signature. Once we get it back, I'll have Flora Township sign it, and then we'll get it filed, so that, again, in the future, we have documentation that didn't just happen at the back of the pickup out there some evening with a couple of guys talking, so that future generations can hopefully rely on that, so.
And all of this is a specific instance. It's not unique in that all the places where we have adjoining borders of Sling County and Ottawa County, and Gary, and so on and clay, sometimes we share with maintenance, and both counties kind of help each other, it's kind of a trade-off, because there is kind of situations where people live right there on that boundary, and, you know, it's opportunity for the counties to work together just to take care of a resident.
Sure.
And safety, public safety, ambulances, and fire trucks, and school buses, I mean, there's a lot of variables involved.
Yeah, in this particular case, Ottawa County didn't have a residence or taxpayer that lived in their county that really justified them graveling the road, whereas Flora Township did, but they couldn't afford to gravel it to the east. So it made sense for us, and it makes sense for Ottawa County, to have some gravel on the road, even though nobody lives on it, people are going to travel, all the farmers, hunters, ranchers, whoever. So it's kind of a win-win for both sides, and I certainly appreciate Ottawa County working with us on that, so.
So he's going to maintain the gravel from here on there?
Ottawa County Road and Bridge.
So if it needs additional gravel later, they will?
If it needs additional, then Flora Township will put it on.
Okay.
Yeah. They've agreed to do it periodically as it needs it, just like with any other gravel road in their township.
But as far as grading the road, Ottawa County?
Ottawa County will grade it, yes.
I see.
In Ottawa County, the townships don't care for roads, they only, the county does all the roads, so.
Oh, okay.
The township does do signs, and I think that's about it.
Okay.
But the roads and bridges is left up to the county, in their county, so in this case, Ottawa County will blade it just like they blade any other gravel road in their county, so, and maintain it, so. It's not a one-time deal, it's perpetually into the future, so.
Well, that's probably been going on for a long time, I'm glad that we.
It has, hopefully this will resolve it, so.
Resolve it.
Okay, so we've got that. I briefed you earlier about the jail project, we met earlier Tuesday with the engineers, we're here doing some more work. Kevin Ross left me a 75-plus percent complete set of drawings, so they're continuing to get, get towards the completion stage. The target is still January, he wanted to have those drawings done and ready to go to the out-for bid. He did say that it'll probably take a couple of weeks in January, just to review and review again, because he wants to make sure things are right, and have them checked and double-checked by people, and, and once they, they're comfortable with that, we'll, we'll submit them for, put it out for public bid, and we'll still remain on schedule as we are, so things are looking fine. No real big alarms, we've dealt with a couple of issues on the, on the jail for the Sallyport entrance, being underneath, with the fiber optic line underneath it, that we had to kind of juggle some, some space around on that on one side or the other, but all in all, looks like we've come up with solutions to all the problems, so.
Okay, thank you, Brad. Craig, do you have any questions or comments? Don't want to leave you out if something came to mind.
No, no thanks, Len.
Okay. Otherwise, we'll go ahead and move on. Doug?
The, I've prepared the Indigent Defense Contract for the four members who are part of that contract. Three of the four have signed, one hasn't as of yet, and, but I'm anticipating I'll have signed contracts from all four by next week, and if the one declines to do so, then I have an alternate ready to step in and take that contract, so before the end of the year, we'll have the 2019 Indigent Defense Contract in place. The tax sale, I'm waiting on the IRS, there's two of the cases that have IRS claims, they have a longer period of time to answer, and they're taking that period of time to answer, so as soon as they answer, then I can move forward and set the, set the tax sale. Brad mentioned about the Detroit Sewer Enterprise, and I reviewed that document, he did an excellent job on the preparation of it, and I would certainly recommend that when the board gets to that point, that they would approve that, it's like a very good agreement for all concerned. That's all I have, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'll go ahead and go to notices and communications. KDHE State of Kansas notifies the counties anytime anyone within the county has something to do with a, this is Kansas Water Pollution Control permit, and it's, anytime someone is renewing their permit or expanding their operations, we're notified of that, and, and there's always a listing of about three or four pages of operators that are doing things within the State of Kansas, so it shows there's a lot of activity in the State of Kansas. The reason we were notified is specifically Glenn Reedy of Hope, Kansas, has applied for a permit. This is a renewal permit for an existing facility for 999 head, or animal units of cattle weighing more than 700 pounds. There's been no change on the animal units from the last permit. And so this is just, is where the State of Kansas notifies the county, so they are aware of that permit being applied for. We also have a letter from the Kansas Association of Counties, and this is just to advise us that the, Randall Allen, who has served as Executive Director for the KAC since 1996, is, will no longer be the Executive Director, and in between, while we're going to be looking for someone new, Mr. Allen is actually on a paid leave till the end of the year, because that's what his contract is. The interim Executive Director pending the appointment of an executive, a permanent Executive Director is Dennis Kreisel. And of course, Dennis has been with the Kansas Association of Counties for quite some time, and so that, everything that's lined up to be taken care of, and meetings and so on, will go on pretty much the same. I'm no longer on that board, and it's, it's always a challenge, but it's not always fun looking for a new director or new leader, so I, I've left that for some of the newbies that have come on, as well as the carryover. And we have a term limit on that, and I had served two terms on that board, and so I, I finished that up last month. Not sure how you pronounce this, VYBE, is the broad, VY, okay? And it's, it's the broadband, and they serve portions of Dickinson County, and it's just advising us, and I think contractually, they have to advise the county and municipalities whenever they have a change in their fee structure, and they're increasing, while keeping in mind to keep expenses under control, but also deliver a good product, they're, they're announcing that they have a rate increase. And on something like this, the county has no control, we can't endorse or turn down the increase, it's just a matter that they're obligated to advise us of that increase. And so that's what they've done. We have a Christmas card, and this is from the North Central Regional Planning Commission, and a very, very nice card with, you know, in these Christmas cards, when they show the snow, it always looks really nice and inviting, but I'm reminded of our discussion earlier today, how pleased we were with the efforts of KDOT, and the county, and the cities in handling this last snowstorm that we had just a while back. That's all I have for any notices or communications. Has anyone else received anything that they would want to bring up? Okay, hearing none, we'll go ahead and move on to the two items that we have added to the agenda. And the first one is on 2330 Moon Road. KDOT has awarded, or sent us contractual papers that we can have a total bridge replacement on an 80/20 split, and this is for 2330 Moon Road. But the county for right now needs to accept that, but also take care of the engineering fee, which would be $49,700. Brad, would you want to add a little more information to that on what the total replacement would be, and?
Well, at this stage of the game, we're estimating it'll be probably half a million-dollar bridge, but the first step in that is to get someone to design the bridge, what's needed there, and, and part of that design process, we'll be coming up with an engineer's estimate. It's been ballpark so far, based on what we know, and that's what got us the approval from KDOT. But once the engineering is, engineering is done, then it'll be left for bid, just like any other project, and we'll truly know exactly what the cost of the bridge will be when we get the bids back, so. We're fortunate to have that approved by KDOT on our federal highway funding program, so they'll pay 80% of the actual project, but the engineering and design is up to the local entity to pay, so.
Is there any question or comment from the commission?
Yeah, Len?
Yes.
Yeah, you might have, this is a landlocked bridge, there's, there's no other way to get to the property, I mean, we have no other options to, you know, it's not like they can come in from another direction.
Okay. And that's a good point, it is one of those where there's already an existing bridge that, that allowed access to the property, and of course, there's kind of a river area through that in a lot of directions, so, okay. Any other comments or questions?
I, I move that we approve the contract with KDOT on this bridge and the expense for the engineering.
Okay, and I'll second that. So we have the motion and the second to approve this KDOT application, and it would involve the engineering fee of $49,700, and eventually an 80/20 split with KDOT. Any questions or comments?
Probably.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, the other item that we added to the agenda is we've had some money that was set aside for the Kansas Sampler Festival that we didn't participate in this year, but we also recognize, you know, it's to promote the county, you might say, and some of the attractions, and we, we looked at this as an opportunity with some of these funds, that we could provide some funding for some of the historic museums that typically are not in our budget in Dixon County. And this includes Harrington, Hope, Towneage, and Chapman. And from our discussion, we were going to allow $2,500 for Harrington, and then for Hope, Towneage, and Chapman, those three, $1,000 each. Is that correct, or what's, in thinking of the rest of the commission?
It is with me.
And we can modify that also, but.
I agree.
Okay. And, and we did have opportunity to visit some of those museums earlier in the year, you know, just wonderful artifacts, they tell quite a story and history of the communities, and, and yet, in the preservation and presentation of, of all that information, I mean, they have overhead just like everybody else as far as heating and maintenance of the building and so on, so while they rely on donations and people stopping by, we thought this was a very worthy, worthy projects or groups that we could give money to, to help with their promotion locally and, and beyond that, as far as their museums.
I might mention that this could be just a one-time event, given this money, but then depends how this money and this fund is used in prior years, that will be determined year to year, I assume.
Okay. And we'll, we'll go ahead and maybe present them with some of those checks, or, I know Brad will be able to get in touch with them and just kind of arrange something like that. So we'll, we'll work out the details. I see, had you made a motion on that, or...
I haven't, but I will make a motion. That, that, the figures that was quoted, twenty-five hundred Harrington, and a thousand Chapman, Towneage, and Hope.
Okay. And I'll second that. Any further discussion or comment? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, that's all we have. Is there any other unfinished business or other business that anyone would want to bring up? And entertain a motion for adjournment?
I move we adjourn.
All second. Any comment? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. We're adjourned.